Alright, hey, what's going on guys? It's Phil with the No Guts New Galaxy Podcast bringing you another Town Hall meeting. Today I've got Russ Beluk again, the President of Piranha Games, and I've also got Darren in the background as well. This is where, uh, well, we sit down, we ask questions for Russ, and, uh, well, specifically you ask questions and he answers. But, uh, before we get into that, I just want to preface again that we do not put up with racism, bigotry, sexism, and/or harassment towards the NGNG staff or PGI staff. So at any point in time, if you'd like to display that, you will be removed from chat. It is a privilege, not a right. Anyways, let's go ahead and jump into introductions. How are you doing, Russ?
Doing great, guys. Happy to be here for another one of these meetings.
Indeed.
So I was gonna say, Darren, uh, what are you doing over there?
I am well-fed. I've got my coffee and, uh, I'm ready to start putting, uh, a voice to these questions. So, um, before we start though, Russ, why don't you give us a little info on what tonight is gonna be about?
Sure. Well, um, we had the Town Hall. I'm not sure. Was that about a month ago roughly?
A few weeks.
Yeah, not quite a month, I guess. So, um, I think, you know, a lot of great stuff's been happening since then and a lot of good stuff in MechWarrior Online and also, you know, just on the forums and kind of getting the community back together and on the same page and trying to, you know, make the best MechWarrior game possible. I think the predominant questions, um, as I went through, you know, the things I've been working on the last few weeks, which included, you know, inviting back some of the, um, stronger characters, you know, the MechWarrior community that had been banned and, you know, unbanning them and bringing them back and saying, "Welcome back, you know, can't wait to discuss MechWarrior with you." And I had some really, you know, amazing conversations actually with some of those people and enjoyed that quite a bit. And, uh, you know, I think between that and on the forums, the most popular or sort of overwhelming question was sort of like, you know, "This is great. Um, really like what I'm seeing lately. I wanna, I hope this continues and I hope this is, you know, the real change," I guess. And, um, but they, they always were asking, you know, "What happened the last two years?" Like meaning, "What happened, um, maybe in those first two years of development? What was the relationship like with IGP? You know, what was the cause of certain delays or certain situations?" And kind of understanding the situation, circumstance, um, and, uh, kind of viewing it from our perspective as to kind of how things have gone the last couple of years. And, you know, I am a firm believer that kind of perspective is everything. So I'd like to try and offer some perspective here today. And I think that kind of led into that Player Council idea too, was we were, we, you know, briefly kind of took a stab at that or let the community kind of talk about it. And maybe it's expected it was difficult for them to come together, which, um, you know, which is, uh, obvious. But I think, um, before I started to step in deeper and deeper into that concept and explore it with the players and try to create something, I wanted to have another Town Hall, if not even a series of them to sort of say, "Okay, let's talk about the past. Let's talk about, you know, the history and the perspective of what happened. Let's talk about in general form, maybe the last two years. Possibly let's get into some subjects like Heat Scale, ECM, or some of the, you know, the bigger topics around MechWarrior Online and kind of why did things go the way they went." And so at that point, when we do get to talking about those subjects, um, any of those subjects the last two years, maybe any of those, um, key design decisions, everyone understands kind of how we got here. So when we do open up that can to discuss it, um, we're all coming from the same place. So I guess that's where I'd like to focus the questions on today as much as possible, in particular the last two years of development. Um, and you guys are gonna have to help me walk through that timeline 'cause I know a lot of you guys out there remember everything probably better even than I do as far as exactly what came out when and what came out before what. And, you know, I think as we talk through this though, we're gonna, it's all gonna come flooding back to me and we can, you know, share exactly, you know, how things went down.
That sounds good. So basically, this is going to last somewhere around plus or minus two hours. Um, so as you heard, we are going to prioritize the questions in the beginning to do with the main topic at hand, which is the last two years of development. But if we run out of those questions and/or Russ feels like moving on, we will move into some other questions. So if you have other questions, you can, you can be, uh, giving our guys whatever questions you want. They're adding them to the document right now as we speak and, uh, we'll get through them as fast as we can. Phil, you wanna take us off?
Okay, so when we're looking at, uh, you know, these questions, primary is, you know, sort of what happened and why. Um, let's see, let's go ahead and look at the first one. Does the Town Hall mean that you have more information that you can share on why certain things were done this way? Or that, or done at all?
Um, yes, I think it does. It thinks, it means that I'm willing to share and go a lot deeper than I have in the past. And there will be some restrictions to that. One disclaimer would be that, of course, in the end it is my perspective and the perspective of Piranha Games. Um, and of course, there will be, I guess, limitations as to how much I, you know, how deep maybe I go and for various reasons. But yes, I think I can go, uh, you know, a fair bit deeper on many subjects than, uh, than I have in the past.
Alright, uh, before the next question, uh, guys that are gathering the questions for us, if you don't mind, please include the person's name that asked the question. For these first two, we don't have that. Um, but this next question, and we did not plant this question. This is coming from you guys. Question is, "Why is it that no matter what PGI says it will do, no matter in how much honesty, there will always be members of the community that will find ways to complain about it?"
Well, I mean, thank you for the question and I don't think I'll talk too much of this because I think in the end, the spirit of the Town Hall is one more of, um, honesty and, you know, about past decisions, mistakes, and, you know, how we got to where we are and how we're gonna make it better, rather than just saying, "People complained a lot. It's not really our fault." So I appreciate the sentiment and that's always gonna be the case with, you know, the internet to a degree, of course. But, um, thank you. I hope that you are appreciating the game and the effort that we're taking. But generally, I think here tonight, let's, uh, I'd rather focus on, you know, how we got here and, you know, maybe past decisions or mistakes or, and really get that information across to users, players, consumers.
Alright, next question we have is about maps and it's from Zees underscore MWO. He says, "What is your biggest lesson learned from early maps?"
Oh, um, there'd be so many. I mean, the early maps at this point in time internally are not viewed as very good. And, um, they're small for 12v12, so that's maybe an expected, uh, lesson you might expect us to have learned since the game. Um, I think at the early, this kind of might be a little more along the lines of what I'm trying to get as far as history. So the way I would take this question is reflect back a little bit about, you know, what were the design decisions back in the beginning around the maps? Um, like a lot of smaller developers that are, you know, starting off on a project and, you know, what, you know, a bigger project like MechWarrior would be to the, to the community and to the gaming, you know, community is a big deal for our studio. And of course, we were small, so it's not like we had, you know, a million dollars to just sort of say, "Well, let's take six months and just, you know, R&amp;D and prototype." You know, it's like smaller studios don't have that luxury. And we hadn't, although we used a lot of engines in the past, we hadn't used Crytek specifically. So there's gonna be some learning and it's gonna happen on the fly. And that's really kind of why we had just, I don't even remember now. You guys might remember more than me. Um, those of us that were in Friends and Family Close Beta played Forest Colony for like, I don't even know how long. It must've been like six months, it felt like. It was just Forest Colony all the time. The guys were learning a lot and then there was River City eventually. I think that came after the Frozen City, didn't it? And, uh, you know, right now, those maps in particular, Forest Colony and River City, they really were developed in a time where we didn't know for sure if technically we'd be able to do 12v12 in MechWarrior Online. I mean, that's a pretty big feat. I, sometimes maybe we forget, but, you know, there's a lot of games out there, modern games even. I might name up Hawk and a few others and someone else is more familiar with those games than I am. But, um, a lot of them, the Unreal-based ones and some others will, um, even Morning Managed kind of 6v6, 8v8. Um, to do full 12v12 with mechs that can carry anywhere from, you know, one to, what, dozen weapons, um, of varying types, it is a pretty impressive feat of network engineering going on all in all. So we didn't know if we'd even be able to do that. So those maps are obviously smaller. And funny enough, they're smaller, but they actually run terrible. I mean, they run slower for our players. You guys have noticed those with lower specs. They run as well as maps that are much bigger. I mean, they're just, it's everything from sightlines to, um, efficiency of assets and every number of things. So I can't hardly answer that question other than say, "We learned everything doing those maps." So, uh, they are what they are. Uh, they can provide some fun experiences to Forest Colony and River City. But, um, at some point, maybe we'll go back and redo them. Uh, but that'll always be a debate of whether we really should be redoing those maps or just leaving them and just creating more and more new ones. So I hope that answered your question.
Uh, a follow-up to that, Russ, um, this doesn't have necessarily a person, but I've heard this many times in regards to these older maps and smaller maps. Has, uh, have you guys ever thought about actually making those only, you know, 8v8 instead of full 12v12? Has that ever been considered or thought?
Uh, do that again, please. Sorry.
Not a problem. Have, uh, have you guys ever considered making those smaller maps just in 8v8? So solo players would be able to and small groups would be able to play on them, but bigger groups would not. Have you guys ever thought about that?
Not generally. Um, the concept is really trying to maximize your server space 'cause that really is how free-to-play games end up making some money is trying to, you know, have as high of a PC as possible per server. However, having said that, it was just in the last couple of weeks, and this is probably a direct reflection of the fact that we do now control the data center. I never thought about these things prior, but now that we have the data center in our hands and I know how much server space we have, a couple of ideas I've had recently, which are in no way confirmed or going to be parts of the future, is potentially looking at maps like River City, um, Forest Colony, and maybe just those two even in particular, um, making them potentially 8v8 maps. And I don't know if that would mean that they would come out of the 12v12 rotation entirely, or if it would just mean that the matchmaker might have that as an option of saying, "Well, I've got eight here and I've got eight here." Um, you know, "We've waited a little while. I can't really find the perfect groups to throw on there right away. Let's launch these guys into an 8v8 style match in one of those maps." It's just a thought right now, but maybe kind of a, a big extension on that thought is also taking those smaller maps and finding a way to utilize them more for our new players. So perhaps if a brand-new player is in a game and we know they are new because they have a cadet bonus that's still active, the first 25-match cadet bonus, and we say, "Okay, let's just create like 4v4 matches in Forest Colony or River City with these new players." Maybe even go down as low as like 2v2, depending on how many new players are in the queue. But saying, "Throw them Forest Colony, let them live a lot longer, let them wander around and maybe bump into each other and, you know, learn how to fight." Um, so there might come a time where I think, in particular, that idea interests me, I guess, because, um, we're always looking for ways, try to teach new players how to play MechWarrior without them getting completely intimidated. So there's lots of ideas on how to do that, as you know, but I think that's one that, to me, I think is pretty interesting. You know, I could see 2v2 or 4v4, players in Forest Colony, um, just living a lot longer, you know, not turning the corner and seeing like three dire wolves and two timberwolves staring at them. So, um, I think that, that could, I think that's an idea with some validity.
Cool. The next question is from Smokin Dave and he asks, "Will MWO return to its visual glory of closed beta graphics? Will this be an option after Community Warfare Phase 2 is out? The difference is huge from closed beta to now."
Well, that's a tough one because I don't know that I necessarily understand what he's saying or agree because, um, maybe he could follow up with exactly what he feels missing 'cause I think it's the same stuff, right? I mean, uh, we still have the glowing, you know, damage stuff. We have the, in fact, our damage texture, I think, is a lot better looking than it was then. Um, you still have all the destructible stuff, arms still blow off all the same. So, um, you know, it might just be a case of, the only thing we've really done to sort of tone down graphics in any way, shape, or form that I'm aware of is just making sure that our low, medium, heavy, and, and very high settings, all display, you know, certain things. So maybe reduce, you know, certain aspects. And so if you can go into those settings and you can crank them up if you want and go, if you go in, today if you go in very high settings with maximum resolution and turn on damage goal and all the various things, as far as I know, that looks the same as it did back in closed beta. Um, I might be missing something, forgetting something that we decided needed to be turned off or toned down because it was just causing too slow gameplay, but I can't remember what that might be. Um, so I'd be interested in a follow-up question from Panther0S, whatever that says. Um, see if he's got something. No, no, which one was it?
No, that was Smokin Dave. Uh, guys, if you, if you do get a follow-up from Smokin Dave, please post it under the question that we just asked, um, but otherwise, yeah, we can move on to the next question.
Alright, moving on to NecroDaddy549 asks, "What is the most difficult component of the game development in the past two years and why?"
Most difficult component of game development?
That is what he asked. What was the most difficult component of a game development in the past two years and why?
Well, I'm going to choose to not describe a component as a feature. Um, if he means feature, that might be an obvious answer and I could change my answer. But component, I guess I'm, the way I'm going to approach that question is kind of more along the lines of, we start development and, you know, we've got to run and manage this, this game, you know, MechWarrior Online and what's the most, what's been the most challenging aspect of that? And I think without a doubt, for a developer that was used to traditional publishing models, meaning, we're basically on our own making the product with some direction from a publisher, but, you know, you got your milestones, et cetera, but no one's playing the game yet. You know, you get the game essentially to, you know, alpha, beta states, do all your testing, make, put it, go through tests. It's gold mastered, it goes out. Not until it goes out does anyone ever play the product. In our case, of course, we never really had an opportunity for a lot of reasons. So people could ask questions about that if they want around, you know, why go closed beta or open beta or launch when we did? I imagine that's on a lot of people's minds. And in our case, we didn't really have all the flexibility we would have desired to on those dates. So therefore, you're putting something out there into the public space that is not only being, I guess, consumed or judged quicker than you'd want it to be, but from that point on, you've let Pandora out of the box. Like the minute you even went Friends and Family, which is where I guess I'm gonna, you know, bang a drum a little bit and say, "It's insane." I mean, we announced the game in our Halloween of 2011, right? Tell me I'm right, yes. And we'd been working on it maybe just a bit before that, signed a contract in August. I think it started around September. So by March, six months later at most, we were at GDC showing the whole world MechWarrior Online, the first glimpse of it. And by April, so like seven months later, we had Friends and Family and there was just a few of us in there. But we had a lot of pressure to open the floodgates to closed beta to, like, we're talking like 70,000 founders. By, we started to do that in June, but it was July, August and, you know, by September, they were, August, September, they were all invited in, I think by that summer. So you're like nine, 10 months from, you know, the time we announced the product till we've got the next 70,000 people invited into closed beta. And the Pandora's box is open from that point on. And now you're just fighting a battle between feature development, which you really need to focus on. You go, "Oh my God, we need this, that, and the other." But you've got now tens of thousands of people playing your game, commenting and saying, "Why isn't this in yet? Why isn't that in yet? Look, hit detection really sucks. PPCs are awful, et cetera, et cetera." And so you're going, "Wow, we can't, you know, like, we, from this point forward, it's clear to us that we have to split our time between feature development, moving forward, and what's managing of live ops." And that cuts into your development time significantly. That is the number one reason why you would want to delay before you go to closed beta or open beta. Because even like, even with additional six months before closed beta, additional six months before open beta, that would make astronomical amounts of difference. If you imagine nine months until we've got 70,000 people invited, but if we could've gone, you know, 15 months, an extra six months, it's almost doubling our development time and you get what's probably the equivalent, would've taken us probably 12 months with all the people invited in and us splitting our time between managing the game, the data center and our players and their player's expectations, along with feature development. It took us 12 months to develop what should've taken us six months. And that's just the nature of live ops game development. So that is probably the biggest thing, is that, that's the most difficult aspect to handle in a game like MechWarrior Online is realizing that you have to take significant amount of resources in a live ops perspective to manage your existing players. Listen to your existing players, listen to the bugs they're having, listen to the concerns and the feedback they have. Try to at least set aside enough bandwidth to take care of those things or enough of them, but manage to carve ahead on future feature development. So that, that's been a, that's been a really difficult aspect. And a bit of a snapshot back into that early time where you're just going, "Wow, I wish we, we really can't go, you know, closed beta now or open beta now, but we have to, you know, we're being, um, forced to in sense." So, um, yeah, that's, that's the way it is. Um, kind of goes into that 2013 conversation we had versus 2014. But, um, at some point, someone should ask the question, I guess, around, you know, the founders program coming out that summer. So, you know, before we'd taken like any money at all from our players, we'd essentially had got to a Friends and Family and even like an early, um, closed beta program and went from there. So how that kind of played into the founders, I think, is an interesting subject as well. But I hope that answers the question, I guess, about the most difficult component of development.
Yes, indeed. Now, I do want to remind everybody that, uh, for the time being, we are discussing the history of MechWarrior Online over the last two years. So, uh, some of you are saying you're not interested in that or whatever in chat. That's fine. That is gonna be the original or the, the first topic of discussion anyway. And, uh, then possibly it'll move into other things. If you don't have questions about the history of the MechWarrior Online over the last two years, you can go ahead and ask other questions. Those are being added to the document as well. And I have seen some comments regarding the quality of the questions. Um, there's nothing we can do about that. We are trying to sort them in, you know, order of what the best questions are, but the questions are coming from you. So if you have a problem with the quality, you know who to talk to. So the next question is from Timber Wolf and he says, "Why was a more simulator-based engine not chosen for the game?" And also a similar question was asked by somebody, "Why was CryEngine chosen?" I know you've talked about this before, Russ, but, uh, you wanna give us some more insight?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think at the time especially, if you look back, um, we considered Unreal and MechWarrior and Crytek. And I think at the time, you're looking at, you know, mid 2011. Unreal 3 was obviously a very mature engine and it was being used by a lot of games. And we'd used it ourselves and we'd had concerns over a couple areas. One being, um, very much lumped into an enormous category of Unreal 3 games. Second, our experience in multiplayer and some Unreal-based games led us to believe that we'd have a very hard time putting MechWarrior into it without significant work. And that's generally the case with most engines and likely has been the case with CryEngine as well. But we played, we'd made some games and been involved in some development processes in Unreal 3 that, um, I saw even 8v8 type scenarios as being very difficult, um, to pull off. But I think we also did want to just stand out more as being something different, not just another Unreal 3 game at the time. So that and a few other business reasons, uh, played into our decision. Very exciting engine, especially at the time. I think it was, you know, besides Crytek's games, we might've for, for a while there might've been the second, you know, biggest product that was using it. You know, they had some, their own games that were very big, but besides their own games, it wasn't, there wasn't a lot. So we could kind of get a lot of attention from them, get a lot of, uh, I guess, notoriety as a, as a CryEngine game. Um, I don't know really how to answer the question about the simulator-based, um, question. I know there might be some engines out there that I guess are made, that were made more for simulators, less really licensable type things, at least not as, as much as, uh, you know, Unreal and CryEngine. But, you know, make no mistake, even though we, um, wanted to make a true MechWarrior product, uh, the first true MechWarrior product, you know, in a long time, and we wanted it to be more MechWarrior, if I could use that term, then certainly then, of course, the console versions of the Megasols and, and even more so than the recent offerings of MechWarrior 4 and such. We definitely wanted to make an action-based game though, you know, we weren't looking to make, uh, um, a full-on simulator. And that actually sort of, uh, brings up an interesting point too. Remember like going back all the way to 2009 when we released that video using Unreal 3? Um, and we had all those conversations with the publishers at the time. Uh, using the word simulator was like dropping the F-bomb in the boardroom at these publishers, you know? And it was just like, "You might as well just get up, leave the boardroom right then and just go have a beverage" because it was over. You couldn't use the word simulator. And I know you guys aren't those boardroom members and a lot of you under, you know, have a lot more interest in that. And we can use the word and not get freaked out and understand what it means. MechWarrior was always for us and I think for MechWarrior games in the past, it was, it was a action sim. So we felt confident that in a game, you know, rendering engine like Crytek, we could provide not only a beautiful rendering environment, but we could create an action game with lots of sim aspects to it. And, you know, that part of MechWarrior Online, definitely the pillar of mech warfare, I, you know, I feel very good about it. I feel like we could start listing off, you know, the things that are in those pillars of information warfare and role forward warfare and just the fact that you see light mechs in the battlefield and you, uh, just all the things we've talked about before, that, um, there's a significant amount of simulator aspects in MechWarrior Online compared to, um, perhaps compared to all past MechWarrior products. Be happy to take follow-up questions on that if, uh, if someone disagreed or wanted to ask, you know, something else about that.
Alright, so we have a follow-up, by the way, of one of the previous questions by, uh, Smokin Dave. Um, he'll say, he says he'll make a thread, um, you know, with the information on there and he gave you a few reference, uh, you know, pictures. So, um, you know, we'll pass that on.
Russ, yeah, that, that was in, in regards to...
To the visual fidelity and stuff like that, that you were, you were curious about. So, um, I'll make sure to make sure, uh, we get that link and then pass it on to you on Twitter and stuff so you can answer those directly. Okay, one of the next questions we have is Wheezeball. He says, "Is the current MC pricing plan all PGI's decision? Or was it IGP's? And if it was IGP's, any plans on adjusting the dollar per MC?"
Um, that was a very joint decision, um, but I'm happy to own that and saying that, you know, myself and Brian and the partners, uh, completely were behind that. So no, I'm not going to say that was an IGP decision. That's a, that's a Piranha one. Um, I'm happy to say that's a Piranha one. And I think that the amount of MC, we've talked about this a little bit last time. The amount of MC per dollars is, I mean, I guess we can, we can pretty much rely and kind of lean on the other products in the marketplace, like World of Tanks for sort of establishing, um, a successful model. Um, there's no way, no two ways about it. I mean, they're an incredibly successful game. Um, definitely much more, you know, broader type of pill product, um, simpler to play, but they can appeal to a huge audience. And they really established, I guess, I would say for vehicular combat-style games like MechWarrior Online, really kind of established a pricing model. And ours is really based on that entirely. If you look at the price of a mech bay, the amount of MC you get per dollar, um, those are pretty much formulas that, you know, directly translate. There, you know, from there it gets a little bit different. Um, you know, our skins and colors are more, but they behave differently. You know, their colors are, you know, unlocked for everything across all of your mechs permanently forever, which there's, you know, more temporary aspects in those games. Our skins are, if you buy the... By the permanent version are good for all of the mechs of that chassis type, whereas. Another products that roll tanks, it's it's more tank specific, so. I think things translate very well, we have this conversation all the time internally, so. I can tell you that, yeah, we're open to discussing it and thinking about it and and frequently revisiting the subject. There will be champions internally that'll say, you know, we should charge less for colors and certain things so that, you know, at least certain aspects. You can convert more players to, you know, spending on the product and in smaller ways. I think we'll constantly be revisiting that, but. I guess as long as I just think we should at least, you know, look at the subject because I have seen it put out there like, hey, the prices are extreme and like more than other games, and I would say, well. They're not more than other games, we could have a conversation that. It should be less than specific games like World of Tanks and list off your reasons why it should be less. And we could discuss those reasons, say, hey, they're right, maybe we should be less than that game because of these X reasons, but. Right now, I think it's very comparable. And I think we do, definitely people will say, hey, the grind is a lot, but I do think we give out quite a few C bills. Comparatively to some other games, there's really, there's no losing money in MechWarrior nine, in fact, it's. Hard to make less than thirty or forty thousand C bills, even if you have an awful round, so. That's a debate that we can go on forever and ever, but I mean, to answer your question, no, I own the the pricing model and that's how we came to it, so. Happy to have that conversation, but I think we just need to approach it in the right way, you know, understanding that it's. It is comparable to other products and we can explore reasons why maybe it shouldn't be comparable and it should be cheaper, but. I would just want to approach the conversation from that angle.
Alright, the next question is placed in in the under the category of the past, so I don't know, this could be present as well, but. Joe Plays Games asks, why does it take so long to get a response from support?
Well, I hope that isn't the case anymore, Joe Plays Games. We had a pretty giant backlog when we first took over from IGP. I think that's understandable, at least from the IGP perspective, so I'm not trying to toss them out of the bus, but I think. It's pretty tough to keep working when you know your job's over, and so when we took over, it was. I wasn't very happy because we paid for it support with IGP right up till the end of. Till the end of August and, you know. Feels as though we didn't because there was such a massive backlog, so I'm gonna. Ask Nico again, but we have the full time customer support staff here. And they've been getting caught up, my understanding is that. Right about now, we're feeling pretty darn good about the way we're we're caught up, so. I'm going to be asking the questions and making sure that we are definitely responding as as quickly as IGP did. Try to beat that, of course. I think we've been taking a lot of extra initiatives during this last month when we have been behind, I know I've been taking personally. Ten to fifteen private messages per day on the forums, support issues that I make sure I get thrown the top of the pile. Taking care of those on a day to day basis. And of course, with the, you know, wave two pack, it was a surge of tickets as there always is. So I feel like we're almost caught up and that's why it took so long and if you think it still takes long. You know. In the month of October, then I'd like to hear from you.
Alright, next question we have is from Werewolf four eighty six, he asks, why did it take so long to balance the founders bonus? With the hero mechs as it was an obvious slap in the face of the founders?
Well. I guess. For whatever reason. We certainly didn't view it as a slap in the face of the founders, I think if we viewed it as a slap in the face of the founders, we would have. We would have changed it much sooner. I think there's always a bit of trepidation. In online game development like this to. Go back and. Change something that you established. At what point, I think in the very beginning. If I'm remembering correctly, because the Yen Lo Wang was the very first hero mech. And we did not, when we made that very first hero mech. We did things very, very thoughtfully, you know, here was our first hero mech. It was a mech that I pushed for to have be the first one, it was probably the most. Notorious mech from my, you know, childhood of reading battle tech novels and whatnot. And. This was a mech that. You know, was. You know, with the pricing on that at this point is about around fifteen dollars for. That hero mech and. You know, we wanted to have a lot of value, and so when we considered what this E bill bonus would be. We very specifically looked at the founders max and said, well, they're twenty five, maybe this should be thirty and we didn't look at it like. You know, that would be a slap in the face of the founders, it was more along the lines of like, well. If it's this much money just for this mech, you know, and the founders got. Not just the mechs, but they got the custom scans and the custom geometry for those mechs and they got the. MC like more MC value than even the founders packs cost. Among, you know, other things. It kind of felt like, well, geez, you know. We've got to establish these hero mechs more than that, or people are going to say kind of the opposite, but you know, the hero mech. Should have a higher percentage, so. That you can, those are the thought processes you go through at the time. It seemed to make a lot of sense and you go, this is the way it should be. And you move forward that decision and again, it wasn't like, well, geez, founders max are twenty five percent, so. You know, screw those guys, let's go thirty percent here, it was the thought process is what I just described, so. And then throughout the years, when it was brought up a few times to our attention, it was more along the lines of like, oh, my goodness, do we? Trepidation, do we really back up on that decision and then? You know, what else do we have to go back and back up on, so. I think we just finally got over that trepidation based on the initial decision and said, the time's ripe. We, you know, we gotta do this, now there's no real reason anymore to not do this, and so. I apologize if you think thought it was a slap in the face, it would never was that to us. That's why we made the decisions we did and now we've changed it, so. I'm glad that you're all getting thirty percent with your founders mechs now, I love seeing him on the battlefield, can't wait till the quirks are in place and we see them out even more frequently.
Excellent, Deathshade eight 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 asks, why did community warfare take such a low priority at first? And do you regret this fact, do you know that many players have stated that they will wait for community warfare before coming back to the game?
Yeah. I do regret the fact that we didn't work on it a lot sooner. This is one where. I don't think it's unfair or. Even. You know, one sided of me to suggest that. You know, we just didn't have the buy in from IGP as a publisher on community warfare. I remember having some of the conversations and. If I want to be really fair. I would say. Piranha games. Probably didn't bring themselves around to like really saying. Well, we have to. Focus on community warfare till. You know, it's probably halfway, I don't know, I'm trying to think about, I want to say maybe as far as halfway through two thousand thirteen, because remember. We are. Based on what I told you before, like we are, you know, nine months in, we're having closed beta, it's only been twelve months and we have open beta. I'm just compare that for a second to, you know, some other big games out there, whether it's Star Citizen or whatever. Great for those guys, they're making the right decisions, meaning they've got the financing and they've got the ability to wait, and so they're. They're waiting and they're going to wait till they're ready and we just didn't have that, you know, that privilege and it was, there was, it's not also unfair of me to suggest that. Of course, being small companies, financial pressures always come into play, but you can always find more flexibility if you've got. Everyone involved is willing to find it and to kind of put things off, but it was a lot of pressure from IGP to hit open beta that fall. And they just had to, they were hitting milestones from their own perspective, their own investors and things, so. That was really intense and that was really important for them to hit those those milestones and. People are commenting that I'm eating my nuts, sorry, guys. Okay, so basically, you know, we had to hit that open beta and. That created a ton of pressure. And so we were scrambling there at the end of two thousand twelve after open beta to. You know, just get get caught up, get caught up in some of the. Features and functionality of our backend infrastructure to make sure that we could support the game that we had now launched ourselves into. And as we got into two thousand twelve, or sorry, yeah, it'd be two thousand. Excuse me, no, I'd be just slipping into two thousand thirteen, right? We had, we had a lot of catch up to the first part of two thousand thirteen and we had focused our eyes on twelve V twelve saying. We need twelve V twelve and then we're going to do community warfare. So I think it's fair to say that we probably ourselves would have at the very latest start to get extremely focused on community warfare. By mid two thousand thirteen at the latest, which let's call it, you know, then. At least a year sooner than we're going to see it in the game, because it would have been me at worst, probably late two thousand and thirteen when we saw that feature going into the product, so. So at the end, it would have probably got into the game maybe about a year sooner. But thinking back, you know, talking to the management level at IGP and stuff, it and this kind of goes hand in hand with the focus of two thousand thirteen. It was, there just wasn't, they just didn't see the value of of the feature, you know, it wasn't. About the core players to them, it was really about, and and I have to admit, we got it, we got caught up in it too, you know, it's like. You know, we're getting told a lot of things like this is what we need, this is what free to play games do, this is what you need to focus on, you know, and so we kind of got caught up in that too. But it was definitely a lack of. Support for the feature from IGP and. It really just wasn't going to be funded, you know, by by them and the revenue share that we had. It probably wasn't until. Wasn't until approaching. Mid two thousand and fourteen. When we got. Let's call it April of this year, when the end of the clan wave one program was in sight. That we started to get, you know, from IGP saying, yeah, I think, you know, our fans want community warfare and that sounds ridiculous, I know, but it's. Kind of, kind of how it went down. So we knew that we would have. That support, you know, moving from. You know, this past summer onwards, but. That's when things were also, we knew that things were changing and there was fairly imminently changing with IGP anyhow for a lot of reasons, so. It wasn't until. You know, with, but as an example, you know, community warfare, unit creation stuff, we worked on that. Over the summer, like June and July, like before the deal with IGP was even complete, so. You know, we'd made the decision that come hell or high water, we were doing it this time, like moving forward and getting that feature in there. With or without their support or with or without, you know, the deal being closed. And. Even if it didn't close, I think we would have got some support from them, but. That's a big conversation, even that would have gone down kind of weird paths, so. Just grateful the deal did get done and we are, you know, completely free to move forward as we are. And that's, I'm trying to focus back on the question and make sure I answered it, but. Really, in a nutshell, I don't think we had the support or the interest or the belief from IGP truly until. You know, well into two thousand and fourteen that. That they agreed that we should make the feature.
Alright, on to the next question we have from Nade two thousand, he says, why was heat scale not looked at? In the past two years since its core mechanic in BattleTech, it's left us without a penalty for running hot. And obviously, this is a topic that I think we brought up last time, which was similar along the lines of, you know, decisions you guys have made. Possibly influenced by external sources. If you could just answer.
Well. As far as, you know, being left without a mechanic for running hot. I don't really relate that to heat scale, I mean, that is a feature really in and of itself, isn't it, and you guys can. Correct me, I've played all the past MechWarrior MechWarrior games, but I don't recall ever. Having a feature like that before where if I'm running at seventy percent heat, all of a sudden my mech goes slower or anything like that. So those types of decisions, those types of features are generally left out of games. More for the basis of, you know, is it fun, you know, is it not fun, is it the? You know, do people just want to play with it, it might be really cool on tabletop, but we don't bring everything over to tabletop. Having said that, you know that we're thinking about that and and adding a feature like that. I've always dreamed of at least if you're running hot, there should be a lot of steam in your cockpit or something that's maybe impeding your view to a degree. Because you're running so hot, there's a lot of cool ideas out there that the whole community has and how we can just say, even if they're small things, just introduce. The impacts of just riding the line, right? But again, I don't really, it's not necessarily related to heat scale, is it, it's heat scale in particular is. I mean. I don't know if if this was really part of the question, but I guess I'll get into it and that is like, okay, you know, what is heat scale, why heat scale? And, you know, is heat scale doing anything? Well, I do think that for the most part, a lot of people. This is a bit of a piling on situation, right, it's sort of like heat scale. I've heard it mentioned a million times that this is awful, so, you know, I hate it too. And that's what, I think we do get a lot of piling on, I think that's a fair comment. Remember, heat scale was. A means to an end, it was, it was about accomplishing something that past MechWarrior games had never accomplished. And I think if everyone's really honest, they can say, well. You know, there's a, there's a lot of problems with. You know, past MechWarrior games, you know, pretty much all the multiplayer experiences have been. You know, completely ruined by, you know, bolting experiences and. People shooting off, you know, basically whatever they can fit in their mech, and so. That was something that was brought to our attention, you know, right from the get go. And. Was something that people are making us aware of from the start and we we dealt with this stuff right from the initial phases of friends and family, I still remember jumping into. You know, Forest Colony and the Hunchback. Four P was an animal, right, it just. It just ate everybody up for lunch, but these are the early days when we're programming everything, you know, I remember when a hunchback with nine small lasers would come across the lake. And tag you with small lasers from eight hundred meters out, right, I mean, that's just unrelated kind of funny memories that we have that when you're building these systems step by step and. Put in the distance and the range and all those things into effect, but. The number of weapons that people could shoot existed, you know, like past MechWarrior products. And there's a lot of things we could discuss. There was a lot of things around hard points, we discussed the graphical hard point style of MechWarrior four. There's some advantages to a hard point system like that, but it also was viewed as though it was really. Restrict the number of variety of builds, you know, within the product as well. And if you think back to the initial versions of MechLab, remember we have significant amount of our player base that are. You know, hardcore MechWarrior players, hardcore tabletop guys that are saying. You know. Your MechLab should just be. Tabletop MechLab, like meaning. Do anything. Weapons anywhere, you know, within lore, so within arms, torsos, center torso, doesn't matter, just put them anywhere you want. Of course, we didn't want to go there because one, we could just, for one reason that just kills it dead is like. You know, that's just an totally unacceptable business model, first off, right, I mean. Geez, have own one fifty ton chassis and you're good to go, basically, right, you can build pretty much anything. So you can't go there, it does kind of destroy canon to a large degree too, so you. You do need to limit yourself to. Some type of hard point system to recreate both canon and to also create just a need for a trebuchet and a Centurion.
Just gonna say.
Send me some messages to, I just.
So.
Tell me about some follow up questions.
Yeah, we got a follow up question in regards to heat scale, obviously, this could, you know, go on for a long time, why it was in, you know, why. The decision was to make it and stuff and so forth, I guess the question a lot of people have, and I've seen this in chat. Is, are you happy with implementation, are you happy with ghost eat?
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to let you interrupt me, I'm going to keep on trucking ahead. I just, I think we need to talk about all of it and. So, sorry if this rambles on a little bit, but I think there are significant amount of listeners out there that do want to hear this. So there, there we have, we knew we had to have a, you know, a hard point system. And we didn't necessarily want to. Limit ourselves that a particular variant variant of particular chassis, let's say if it has missiles on the left torso. Would only be able to fit. Certain sized ones. We felt it gave us more variety. It was, again, maybe one of those happy medium sort of situations where you've got players that say. You know, absolute freedom in the MechLab, which we knew wasn't viable from our game and for, you know, financial reasons and just. Excuse me, business model, et cetera, so we found, you know, the hard point system that we have, which generally works out well, but I suppose. but I suppose, obviously, if you've got three energy hard points boss and you can boat, you can boat just as well as you could in past, you know, MechWarrior games. So remember when we had, there's a significant amount of our players that, at the time and up until heat scale was released, were, you know, they were complaining, and they were complaining every bit as loud as the, you know, "We hate heat scale" type of players. I mean, they were saying, "Look, this is lame, you know, I don't want, if I get hit with one more, you know, six PPC stalker, I'm done, you know, I'm quitting. This is not, I thought you guys said you were going to, you know, do something different, you know, than past MechWar games, like, you know, you need to fix that." And so we had to come up with a system that was new to MechWarrior, that would, you know, be like other games have done, that didn't have all the canon and lore, that basically just, you know, put restrictions in place that makes sense from a game balance standpoint of saying, "Okay, does it really make sense that you can shoot, you know, nine medium lasers at once?" Or just as one example. So heat scale was really created with just that one goal in mind. It wasn't to, and it was also about trying to find some happy balance. It was about saying, "We're not going to restrict it all the way, we still want players to have a sense of power, but do we really want them shooting 60-plus, you know, pinpoint damage?" And every time I say that, someone's going to say, "Well, you know, two gauss, two PPC, you know, direwos right now." There are particular builds and particular weapon setups that, you know, we still hear about, saying, "You know, do something about that, reduce that, we want to reduce pinpoint damage even further." So all I'll say, and then I'll answer the follow-up question, Phil, is that there is a lot of different sides in MechWarrior fanbases. There are those that really do enjoy more of a mentality of like, "I saw you first, I'm going to put a hole right through your mech, and that's what I enjoy." There are other players that want to more chip away at people, like restricting pinpoint damage does, but... Okay, you gotta stop messaging me in Skype, it's distracting me hardcore. Okay, so follow-up question, I, I had a little bit more to add to that that I thought was valuable, but I'm getting messages like, "Hey, say this," or "Remember this." Do I, am I happy with it currently? Well, that's, it's hard, because I think as a player myself, I've always leaned more into the category of, "I want to feel like I'm in a really big mech. I want to feel like I can last a long time, that I can take some abuse, that I can survive a mistake, and approach the game more like a battle of attrition type of mentality, and chipping away to people with kind of well-balanced builds. You know, I've got some model cannons, I've got some missiles, et cetera, and chipping away to people, and I think it's a lot of fun." And that was kind of the notion that we created from the get-go with the, the first GDC demo, the notion of blowing an arm off of a mech and you see the atlas, he goes straight for the right torso. And a lot of that gameplay, of course, is in our, in our game still, but I didn't want it to be dumbed down to the point of, "All I do is shoot at your CT, because I have six PPCs I shoot at once." And sorry, I did remember that other aspect. I just want to say this, that, "Am I open to discussing heat scale and absolutely redefining it, changing it, removing it if necessary?" I am, okay? So people can cheer. I am. However, I won't do it, I guess, out of just purely reactionary, and not until I think we collectively decide what's actually, or what, what the majority of our players really do want, because I don't know that our players necessarily want some of the alternative solutions. Remember, a lot of the alternative solutions that were offered from our players had some very clever ideas, but some of them, like I'll just give one, for example, they used to say, "Well, have your heat bar build faster, but cool off quicker." I'm simplifying it, but essentially, you know, situations like that. And the only problem I think we ever had with some of the alternative solutions at the time was thinking to ourselves, "Well, I understand that, and that's great, meaning it will reduce the amount of DPS that our players are putting out in a similar way that heat scale reduces DPS, however, it doesn't necessarily remove the one capability that we're trying to remove from the game." And we can talk about it being a joke builder, not, but let's just use the good old six PPC stalkers as an example. The way it was currently created, it could fire, if, please remind me, this is, now you can distract me with a message in one of my boxes, I'm getting this wrong. If I remember correctly, because I was killed by them before, they can fire off, they could fire off all six and they wouldn't shut down. And so maybe you could adjust the bar and the way the heat bar works to cause them to shut down, but I think what our players were telling us at the time, or at least what we felt was, "I don't want to take six PPCs to my mech even one time. Like, don't let it happen. Like, doesn't matter if the heat bar is half as tall and instead of being able to do it two or three, like, instead of being able to alpha two or three different times, only let them alpha once." We felt the vast majority of our players at the time, and making a lot of noise, were saying, "I don't want them to be able to do that even one time, because one time is enough to take off my entire right side of my mech. That removes, that kills the experience for me. So let's put a system in place that isn't just allowing to alpha less frequently, but it's a system that says, 'You really shouldn't be able to alpha those weapons together.'" So I think that answers your question though, as far as, "Am I happy with it?" I think you can tell that I am happy enough to a degree that it's served a purpose. It has, I think we can all at least say, "Okay, fine, let's all admit that at least it has served a purpose to reduce the, or I guess I would say, increase the time to kill and prevent the majority of the super-high pinpoint damage, or at least it's reduced that greatly." So it has achieved some goals. I think if we can all just say, "Okay, it's achieved some goals," and, "But having heard that, admitted that, and saying, 'Okay, it's achieved some goals, Russ,' but I still think, after everything you said, heat scale's a bad idea, and here's why, and here's some alternative solutions, and we feel like the majority of our players agree, and it'll make a better play experience, then I'm happy to have that conversation, but I just think it was important for everyone to kind of, you know, hear the whole story. That's not even the whole story, as you said, there's, there's another two hours there, but there's enough for now, I guess.
Yep, we're actually going to take a quick five-minute break, guys. I do want to remind everybody that's sending in your questions, we have a ton of them, I don't know how many pages we have, but a lot. But the way you word your questions oftentimes means whether they're going to get asked or not. Be polite, that's all we're asking, you can ask anything, but be polite. If, if you're not, then it's not going to get asked. Everybody here that's volunteering, Russ, myself, Phil, people helping behind the scenes are doing this after hours, so be nice, and we are thankful that you are here, Russ. We'll take five minutes, we'll get back right to the questions after this.
All right, guys, and we are back. Welcome to everyone out there. Got like 700-plus people listening in right now, which is awesome, so again, thank you guys for coming out in numbers to boot. Let's just go ahead and again, go over to quick introductions if you are new here. We've got Russ Bullock, President of Prana Games here, as well as Darren, another host of the NGNG Podcast, and we're going to be going over questions directly from you. We have, I think, what, nine, 10 pages of questions? And again, like Darren said before, the, the five-minute break, hey, be polite in your questions and they'll get answered. If you're not polite, well, it's to be expected, you know how to fix it. All right, let's go ahead and dive in to the next question.
I think I had that ready, where was the next question? I, I lost it during the break, so you want to go ahead and take this one?
It's 12, 12 pages of questions, actually, I corrected myself, sorry about that.
I know. You want to go ahead and take the next one, I'll find mine again.
All right, question here from Parjar or ParJ, I don't know how you pronounce it, I say Parjar, just because. He asks, "Is there anything, when you launched UI 2.0, Russ, that you'd wished you had, or something that you wished you hadn't have done?"
I wish we had designed it completely differently, so that's pretty much sums it up. I'm being maybe a bit dramatic, I, I just, aspects of it that I like. It does have some better, some better backend, you know, support and whatnot, but, you know, I of course like the full screen aspect and being able to use the camo spec screen at, you know, at full screen, and it really can look beautiful now on very high settings when you're, you know, painting your mechs and all that with the colors and the camels and, you know, the deckles upcoming. I think that's obviously a very positive thing about the new, the new UI. There's other aspects I like about it, I think that it's getting better, you know, it's, it's getting better each patch, you know, we, you guys saw a lot of the fixes and tweaks and improvements are coming, slowly but surely, and there's another round of improvements that are happening. Even Tuesday's patch, the store got a whole new pass on it, which makes it significantly better. We've got, we were talking about this earlier today, it's a, it's a big subject for us, and we still needs probably at least a full month of dedicated, and that becomes a problem, because there's not someone that's dedicated to UI full-time. As far as UI 2.0, UI 2.0 improvements, we have a full-time UI engineer, but they spend significant amount of time implementing screens for community warfare and feature development. So we're hopeful, we'll have some more time in October, but November, where, you know, the project manager and I were talking earlier, might be able to be, we hope, very significantly dedicated with this particular engineer to the improvements of UI 2.0. So you should see, of course, in the MechLab, significant changes still, you know, nesting in the achievements, better structure in, in the skill tree area, removing of the double confirmation bits and pieces, and of course, just speeding it up, just changing the way that, you know, we load the mechs in, streaming mechs in, just, it's a few, just a few key things that just speed up the whole UI a ton, so I think we're going to get there. An interesting side point there though, which is just, I guess I just can't help myself, So I think we're going to get there. An interesting side point there though, which is just, I guess I just can't help myself, but throw out there is the fact that, you know, UI 2.0 was 100%. You know, a piranha games expense or burden, you know, the initial UI was created to meet the initial, you know, closed beta and open beta dates that we were, had a lot of pressure to hit. And then after that fact, when it was clear to us that it was significantly underwhelming and we needed to, you know, fullscreen a number of big, big changes. You know, that was just not something that, you know, IGP was ever willing to participate in as far as paying for it. And it was a hundred percent, we took on the full expense and burden. And that's a different subject, but there's, you know, the subject that we could talk about that, you know, Piranha Games always had upwards of $100,000 a month or more of excess, you know, overspending on the project with our own staff and rip money above and beyond, you know, what was being paid for ongoing development fees. So this was one of those things in that category. So it was one of those things that we just did on our own without getting any kind of development funds for it. Did the best job we could and, you know, it's, which plays into the reason why it took so long. When you're using resources that are really insufficient to do so, but you're doing the best you can because you're, you know, you're not being paid to make that feature. And so you get it finished and, you know, put it out and then, you know, it's a struggle just to continue to improve it. So, you know, I feel better about it every patch. Thinking back, you know, there's not much I can almost say wish we could have done differently. Because under those circumstances, I think you might understand more kind of, you know, why or how it took as long as it did and maybe ended up the way it is. And fairly hopeful, I guess, maybe I'm always optimistic person though, these things. So you can certainly take this with any amount of skepticism you want. But I'm hopeful by the end of, end of 2014 here. Yeah, we'll have gone through another fairly significant round of improvements. And, you know, we'll start film, that everyone at least start feeling, not like there wasn't more to do or more improvements to be had, but that, you know, at least feeling pretty good about the functional state of UI 2.0. And then I guess we'll have to call it what 2.2.5? I don't know. Come up with something, I guess.
Alright, a follow-up question to that. We've had a few responses. I'm just going to read those. And then there's a follow-up question. Obviously Victor Morrison asks, "Interactive Smurfy Mech Lab win?" We also have, "Is UI 2.0 fixable based on the current design or would you have to redesign it?" And I guess the follow-up question, if you want to touch on those would be, you know, if you're not happy with it and with the most of your game time being spent in the mech lab, which is really important. I would say probably what 80, 90% of the time is in the mech lab. How important that is and that the lack of functionality UI 2.0 has. Do you see that as not a higher priority?
I don't know. Do you mind summarizing the question a bit for me?
Okay, let's, let's jump into the first one is, you know, the game being in the mech lab, is that not more priority than, you know, waiting, you know, months, months, months? That's a lot of people are considering is the functionality of the mech lab is severely lacking in a lot of areas and that, you know, you spend 90% of your time in the mech lab.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand. It's a fair point. It's, I guess I'm trying to imagine, I guess, I want to look at this from a, you know, comparing it to, you know, the original UI to UI 2. And maybe I wish I had more of a snapshot of what people felt was, because I guess some of the things that they felt was severely lacking from the original UIs. Or from this UI was also lacking from the original one. So I guess all I can say is, when you have someone and you're putting as much extra resources as you can into something like UI 2.0, you always have a tendency to work within the time slot you have. So you're basically saying, hey, we got Steve in here, a UI engineer. We got him for, you know, four days this week. What can we get done? Okay, we can redo the entire, you know, homepage mechs, you know, select mech button. We can do this, that, and the other two, you know, improvements on the sorting. So when you do this list, it actually filters properly. When you buy a mech, it doesn't reset the list. And when you, you know, we can get these things done. We can get these things done, these things done. But very rarely is there enough time where you say, hey, we can take on the mech lab now. Because that is, you know, at least a couple of solid weeks, if not the better part of a month, right? So that's why you don't generally take on those tasks in those sort of windows. One thing you could do, of course, is say, every time you have, you pull three, four, five, six of these little windows that you get together and get something like the mech lab done. But it's hard for everyone to be patient, including ourselves. And we never hardly have the discipline to say, you know what? Our customers can wait two months to get this new mech lab in. When you look at the number of features and improvements that we put into the UI in those two months, it's always very hard to make those decisions to say, let's stall the new feature releases or stall the fixes and improvements of UI 2.0 for two months, so we can get the new mech lab out. So that's just the way it goes. And I think that, you know, hindsight, sometimes you could say we make different, could have made different decisions. But at least now we're getting to a point where it really is at the very top of the list and we're going to have the time soon. So I want to get into mech lab. Obviously, Smurfy Interactive is top on everyone's minds. There's still some development concerns there, at least as far as low-resolution players. So we have to think of a smart way to accomplish that and whether or not we can go full interactive. Or if it's a combination of using the mech detail screen and then say you're on the left arm, you know, edit the left arm and it quickly jumps to the left arm page that we have now. And then pop back and forth through mech details and that, that's obviously a quicker way to go. We can Google, we can do that very quickly. So you look at the mech details, figure out what you want to do, click to edit one of those components, quickly jump to the screen of that particular component's editing. Make your changes, save and jump back to the details page. That's something we can do very quickly, like, I don't know, let's call it, you know, within a week of a change of the mech lab. Next time we have a window versus saying, no, you know, figure out a way to make the detail screen 100% interactive all the time for all resolutions. Even if it means you don't display the mech there or whatever, make that happen. That's, that's a little bit longer. So as soon as we get to that point, we'll be coming back to you guys and seeing which method you prefer us to take. But yeah, Interactive Smurfy is, is high on the list.
Alright, we're going to move on to another question. The document just shifted. Okay, there it is. Also, just want to point out real quick, guys. I'm getting poked a lot on Teamspeak and Skype, so I'm assuming others are as well. I'm sorry, but I can't answer. And probably if you're poking other people, they're not going to be able to answer your questions either. We're trying to focus on this document and the questions that are coming in from the audience. So sorry about that. I'll try to get, you know, everybody will probably try and answer your questions after the show or some other time. The next question is going to go a little bit more into the artistic side, concept art. It's RonanX38 asks, "Why did the posting of concept art and mech preview videos end?"
Well, there isn't a very good answer for mech concept art. Things where the website and the web developers got behind. And I guess I could blame the state of the website. The website's fine, it's good, but it's not very usable by non-web developers. So you have to go to web developer to add concept art to the media section. It definitely talked about putting stuff at the forums until such time as it's data-driven. Or we can get someone to add them into the, you know, into the proper places in the forums. The mech creation videos, that's probably a better answer is, in the early days when they were really consistent, Piranha Games did it. You know, we had our art director Dennis and our own staff. We took care of the videos. We made them for all the hero mechs. But it was a lot of effort and we weren't getting any kind of marketing, you know, pay from between us and RGP and our relationship to do that such. So at some point, there was always a pressure, I guess, also for them as the marketing team and IGP saying, hey, we want to handle it. We're the marketing team. So at one point, we stopped making the videos and handed over the entire range to, to IGP. And, you know, they contracted with some, you know, some video creators in the, in the community, which made some really great videos. Made a lot of really great videos, but just didn't achieve the same, the same pacing. And so, you know, some got missed and one month they might do something more of a general video than, you know, a particular mech video. And, and I guess it just, I don't really know for sure. It just didn't happen with the same consistency it did in the beginning when we were running it. So, and at this point, since we've taken over, we haven't reestablished, you know, our foothold in that regard. But then, you know, with the, with the mech packs coming out and stuff, it is a bit of a different, you know, a bit of a different release process now. So I guess hopefully that gives you some insight exactly why, you know, things changed, how it was coming out of this consistency and then totally changed at one point. And that's why it did.
Although I do want to just interject real quick that we are taking steps to try and bring more of the concept art to you guys. Specifically, the last vlog video, we had the first time lapse of Alex, you know, doing the king crab. So in some aspects, like keeping the website up to date, yeah, that definitely needs to be kicked up a notch. But in other aspects, we're trying to bring you new stuff and, you know, as much of it as we possibly can.
Okay, great. I need you to ask me some questions from.
Oh, I got one.
Phil. No, no, my good buddy Victor Morrison, who.
Oh, yeah?
You know, is asking a lot of questions and we.
Oh, yeah, I got one.
Send some emails and yeah, give me some of his because otherwise he'll say, you didn't answer my questions and why'd you avoid them?
Alright, so there's a link in one right here. Yep. And we've sort of talked about this or you gave an answer at least. "Why was there such a determination to stay the course no matter what the public opinion was, which led to the removal of poll creation because of third-person view? 300, 3,500-plus votes, 93% was opposed to it, 93% of 3,500-plus? Rather than just listen to the community, this meta ensued what led to the Save MWO and more than, you know, specific issues." He's just curious why there was such massive overall mean disapproval by PGI that you guys were unwilling to adjust and that to even call the issue controversial. He's just wondering what the motivation behind this was and why this might be changing or will it be changing in the future?
Well, I mean, I think the last part, we have to at least say that I think there is signs that it is changing, that it's already changing. But it's a good question. I remember that time very clearly, summer of 2013 and very strange time. I mean, if you look at the setting that I've kind of described here, we were, we're pushing for features like 12v12 and we're smack in the middle of 2013, which, you know, at this point, we didn't have any support from IGP when it came to features like community warfare. And as I explained in my first town hall, it was like 100% about like, look, we have hard, we have core mech warrior players. But we need to retain new players, you know, it's like this is what free-to-play games do. We've got to grow. We've got to convert new players. And I hated third-person view as much as anyone else did. Although I looked and saw, well, look, it's in all the other games. It's in all the other mech warrior products. So, you know. And I knew that our game was always going to be mech warrior, you know, it wasn't going to feel like mech assault or something just because there was a third-person camera. But I was against it the whole time. And, you know, I just, it was finally kind of a giving up process of going to E3 and going to the trade shows and watching one person after another get behind the controls, watch, watch them run into a building for 10 seconds straight, not understanding why it'll, you know, they're, they can see open terrain in front of them like clear as day, yet they're running in the place. And they didn't understand that their torso was turned into a building while they were, or their legs were turned into a building while their torso was facing into open space. And it was really frustrating. And we had so many wonderful ideas of like, just do this, just do that, put this indicator in the HUD, just do this, 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 this. And none of them made any difference whatsoever. And I think I finally just kind of caved and said, fine, you know, let's just show players how the torso moves and they're going to get it. Now, as far as, as the poll specifically, I just think we were, I'll admit to stubbornness here. I will. I'll just be like, I was against it forever. But when I finally decided like, screw it, we've got to test this and just see, just see if it works, see if it makes a difference. Like see if new players coming in, get it, stick around and, you know, they start, you know, to grow the player base. And I was also convinced that, you know, we were still going to have mech warrior in the end. And, and then that's just the tip of the iceberg as far as the politics involved and the whole, how do we improve conversion, retention and all the buzzwords of free-to-play at the time with, between us and our publisher and the pressure from all sides to do things to the game that grew the game, that weren't, again, we didn't have the support at that point for things like community warfare. We were trying to do things like this. So we were just really determined stubbornly to just see what the results were. I also firmly believe that, again, I said this, I'll say it one more time, that I didn't think it was going to affect the feeling and spirit of the game. That most of the reasons we're getting from the community were saying, you know, basically what it boiled down to was sort of, this isn't, you know, it's an insult. It's an affront to my senses as the type of mech warrior game I want. And I understood that, but I said, look, I know it's an affront to your senses, but I don't think it's going to impact the game. It's not going to make a, you know, a mech assault experience or a dumbed-down experience. A lot of the, you know, it was going to dumb it down. And it's not. And I think if we're being fair, and I can fully admit to saying, I didn't listen, didn't listen well enough to the community. I was stubborn. I wanted to, when I finally caved on this, I wanted to see what the impact would be. So I'm sorry about that. I'm not planning on doing that again. I think that's clear. So it was, this isn't something where I'm just saying IGP said, put it in or it's done. They certainly, they were certainly a big part of it. I mean, they certainly had lots of, you know, ideas and pressures and saying, look, it's in all the past mech warrior games, et cetera. So I think everybody was in on that decision. And if people bring this up all the times in the forums though, you know, when I say, you know, when the player council ideas or number of things come up, they say, well, what about everyone that doesn't come to the forums? You know, like not very many of us come to the forums. And it's true. It's a very true statement that we were witnessing in real time. We didn't know for sure, you know, how much, you know, what, how much the forums really represented of the total player base or we had some idea. During that Save MWO campaign, it was obviously not fun, stressful for us, didn't want to go through it. But of course, again, there was a sense of stubbornness to get, to just see at least what the impact was. And, you know, we had a very successful Phoenix program going on at the time. And what ended up being the case was we had 200 requests for refunds out of almost 30,000 Phoenix packages. So I know that, you know, I know a lot of people would be upset and still maintain their packages. So I'm not saying 200 people represent how many people disagree with the decision or anything like that. But it was clear that, you know, it wasn't everybody that felt that way. And I think if I'm sitting here and saying, I made a mistake, I didn't listen well enough, I think at this point, we can say also, though, if everyone admits in fairness, that third person did kind of end up being what we told you would be, meaning no one uses it, you know, it doesn't impact the games. I watched the competitive teams play. You know what these guys are like. They'll do anything, anything to get an advantage, to win a match. They don't use it. They don't switch out. You know, I think there's enough of a penalty and difficulty in just fighting in it and too much of a penalty, switching back and forth, which is the plan. That it's not a viable game mode for anyone who's a half-decent pilot. So I think now at this point, most people's hate towards it is pretty much centered around the frustration that Victor mentioned that, hey, you didn't listen to us. And not necessarily focused around the fact that, hey, this is a feature that's ruining the game or, or something along those lines. Really, it's not ruining the game. It's barely used by anybody. I'm not sure, you know. So someone could say it's not used, take it out. Maybe we can. I think that saw a follow-up questionnaire that was in the doc, like, what's stopping you from taking it out of the game entirely? Or taking it out of the hardcore role-playing mode, which is community warfare? Nothing, nothing. So I guess I'm willing to go back to the drawing board in this and discuss it with you guys. I think if we can all look at it, I would just ask everyone to look at it in the sense. I think if we can all look at it, I would just ask everyone to look at it in the sense of how much did it really impact the game? You're pissed off, I didn't listen, that we didn't take it out when you voted that way, I understand that. Now that we see the impact it's had, is there a place for it? Is there a place for it somewhere? Can it exist in public queue? Can it exist for players who have played less than a hundred matches? I mean, there's, there might be some place for it. So instead of just saying, okay, you're listening now, take it out. I think we should, we should talk about it and just see if, it seems logical that there's a place for it and it might provide some benefit for some uh, you know, for some newbie mech warrior pilots. But you know, as long as it doesn't impact the um, the game quality, which again, I think at this point, we can at least say that's clear, that maybe in the beginning, there was some concern over that, but that's proven to not be the case, that you know, it's not impacting the competitiveness of the games or anything, it really just boils down to a frustration, I think, of uh, of it being in the game and, and not um, feeling like you weren't listened to. So I, I hope that's, you guys think that's fair. Um, if there's follow-up questions to that, happy to take them, otherwise, um, thanks.
All right, well, um, I thought we would do a, a double hitter here um, from Victor Morrison. Uh, he's got another question here that I thought was interesting, then Phil will have a question after this. The question is, originally when Mech Warrior Online was put out, the plan was to give new players a single mech of any weight class, low tier to start. This would allow them to begin modifying and start working off their handicaps right away. Then the trial system got put in, why did this come about and could we see the original system returned? It would be much less painful as a trial mech system provides such handicaps, it warns uh, warns off new players badly. The overall view is that it was a mistake from its implementation, so I apologize if it bridges into a current issue.
Well, um, you guys might remember better than me, but I, I don't know that it was ever a plan to give them a free mech. I mean, it might have been mentioned, someone's going to dig up some post or something and that's fair. It, it might have been said at some point, if it was, it was really said prematurely, which is one of those lessons that you learn when you're running a live ops game, is that you have to be careful what you say, um, because everything becomes a promise. So what thing is true is that we didn't know yet, we didn't know what we should do. We were trying to take lessons from various games, you know. Little tanks gave you a free tank, but it was a tier one, it wasn't really quite comparable. Like even in our game, like even a locust is, you know, a much more viable thing inside of a match than, you know, a tier one tank, a tier one tank just, just goes in a tier one match essentially. So wasn't very comparable, then we looked at League of Legends, which is more of a trial type system and things have probably changed a ton in the last two years, I wouldn't be aware of. But you know, our, our system has evolved a lot too, though, right? I mean, keep that in mind, there's, there is the trial system, but the trials have grown from four up to twelve. And the trial mechs have switched from being really basic inner sphere stock mechs to being, they're either full on champion mechs or uh, clan mechs, which are all not great, great, great compared to what you guys run and customize that are mastered, but pretty, you know, pretty effective comparatively. I know you can't, you can't optimize them yet, uh, or, you know, go to mech lab with them. And we also put the introduction of the cadet system in, which I think actually is, I'm very happy with, I'm very proud of that. I think it's something that was, um, you know, that we came up with, that's different than other games, that is um, very strong for new players. So um, there's the achievement that unlocks each match, a lot of you guys aren't playing so long, maybe you haven't experienced it, but there's a cadet bonus that the first twenty-five matches, you get a very inflated amount of C bills. So by the time you're done playing your first twenty-five matches, you should have around eight million C bills. And uh, which is played to pretty much buy any mech in the game. So, um, yeah, I, it's, it's not like a, you know, a, a money thing or a financial thing or like a cheapness thing of like, oh, no, no, we're not going to give anybody anything. You get your free four mech base, I think we, we would absolutely consider giving um, a player a mech for free. There is some complexity there though around what mech do you give them? Do you try to make everyone a, a medium pilot in the beginning because it's in the middle? Kind of of, you know, mobility and firepower and let them branch off from there, give them a, build a whole new UI screen and let them choose. When do they choose? How do they, how do they know what to choose? They don't know what they like yet. So they just take the biggest one by default? So there's, there's some questions there still, and I think there's a lot of thought process going and say, they don't know until they're done their cadet bonus. So give them a mech when they're done their cadet bonus, and that was the thinking. But instead of actually giving them a mech when they're done their cadet bonus, we make sure that they get enough C bills to get a free mech. So in, in essence, we are giving them a free battle mech like you're suggesting. But the idea morphed into more of a suggestion of saying, play all the trial mechs, try everything. Try the little ones, try the big ones. Play them for first twenty-five matches, when you're done those twenty-five matches and you're done your cadet bonus, we're basically ensuring you that you will have enough C bills to buy most any mech in this game. You know, especially uh, within the inner sphere mechs, anything up to eighty tons or, you know, depending, maybe a little more if you had good first twenty-five matches. And buy your own mech, buy anything you want, um, free, it's on us. So yeah, it's true, they're not in the mech lab modifying match one. But remember, you're keeping new pla, new players in mind here. You almost don't want them going in the mech lab match one. It's an intimidating process, there's a lot of stuff in there and we can improve the mech lab experience a lot. But there's a lot to be said of the notion of saying, take a brand new player. Don't make them go into the mech lab yet, there's no reason for that, that's really complex. Give them good trial mechs that are competitive enough, champion mechs, et cetera. Go out, twenty-five matches, cadet bonus, when they're done the cadet bonus, they're ready to choose what mech they want and we've given them a free eight million C bills to buy any mech they want. So the system is um, evolved that way. It can be completely audited again and determined if there's a better path for new players. But I don't know if just ditching all of that and just saying, here's a free mech, match one is actually any better though, or if that would, you know, create more retention or, or have this, or have, you know, less effective um, impact on players. You know?
All right, next question, and this is a lengthy one, so here we go. Chrono Jam, so he asked, background a little bit, at GDC in March two thousand thirteen, Brian said that just under fifty man team, PGI was just under a fifty man team, could be expected to grow by as much as a hundred percent. By December two thousand thirteen, MWO was stated to have a team size of forty-five, in other words, still right under fifty. In May of two thousand fourteen, Russ, yourself, said PGI had recently, uh, recent rash of hiring, twenty percent growth over the six month period, presumably for non-MWO projects like Transverse. Now September, MW, um, now in September, MW sustains a team of thirty-five to forty developers, including external contractors. So the question is, MW's team size at the end of two thousand fourteen appears to have slightly shrunk since GDC two thousand thirteen. Uh, if not in Christmas, despite a lack of talk of growth, a hundred percent, twenty-five, thirty, et cetera. Can you explain this, Russ, and has there been difficulty hiring or retaining the needed talent? The talk about sourcing the external contractors was worrying.
No, um, I, I'd answer that question and, and I think the MechWarrior team size has been extremely consistent for the last two and a half years. So what's happening here more than anything is just an inconsistency of terms. At times, we list off the entire company size and the entire company is working on MechWarrior Online, so they're all on MechWarrior Online. But other times, I'll refer to the actual peer developers that are working on the game. And so I might not count, it's unfair to them because they're very viable, you know, important to the project, but I don't count QA or dev supporter, customer support or admin or management or anything like that, and just like pure programmers and artists and level designers, that stayed almost rock solid. Uh, it's like, right now, today, um, we're fifty-five people. Um, we've been fifty, pretty much right around fifty people for the last two, two and a half years, it's hardly changed at all. You, you, you might lose a few guys once, you know, in a year and you hire them back. The rash of hiring might have been referring to the first six months of two thousand fourteen as we grew for the second project. But we grew to a total of sixty staff, almost exactly with Transverse. We're now fifty-five staff, uh, it is a reduction in five staff in the last, well, in the last week, um, based on uh, the Transverse. So you know, Transverse not taking off. So um, everyone's wondering that, there's your answer. So now it's fifty-five people total in the company, um, a hundred percent working on MechWarrior Online. So everyone's working on MechWarrior Online. The actual, I'd have to do the math, the actual developers then is probably about five higher than it was in the past, so there's, you know, uh, geez, probably a little over forty now of kind of those peer development staff, as I call them. But once you mix dev support and customer support and everyone else into the mix and fifty-five people, a hundred percent on MechWarrior Online. External contractors comment um, was related to Transverse. MechWarrior um, doesn't use any, well, very little external contractors. We had um, some help um, with some skin work. Uh, Mark Hayden, I'm not sure if you know his name, he's not working with us at the moment, but we did some external contract work there on some skins. There's been a little external contract work on some video editing over the years. But predominantly MechWarrior Online is, is never outsourced anything and it's always been a hundred percent internal staff and it's been rock solid, around fifty people, company size, now we're at a total of fifty-five. Finding and retaining staff, no, um, we have a very low turnover rate uh, here at Piranha Games. We, uh, we average just a couple, one or two a year that leave on their own accord. I mean, I don't have, you know, HR sitting in front of me to get the exact numbers, but that would be pretty close, that would be within a person probably. And so we've, we've been able to find all the staff we want, um, Vancouver's pretty good for that. There's really only one, there's one or two areas that can be difficult, we had a hard time finding. Um, so backend systems engineers, we're pretty much constantly looking for those. So if you see a Java op, application like that open on the website, doesn't necessarily mean we haven't found one. Now, we have hired a couple in the last year. Uh, but we basically keep the job open, that open all the time because we're always looking for it. So there's always going to be a few positions like that, that like the, the application pretty much stays up non-stop. Um, no matter if we find someone or not. So there's a couple, couple um, positions that are harder to fill in general, but um, I, I think that there was definitely a false, that's a false summary, probably our fault based on not using consistent terms. Um, but it's, it's, there hasn't been fluctuating really hardly of staff at Piranha Games in the last two and a half years. It's been pretty much, as I said, uh, we're basically fifty people for probably three plus years, hardly going up or down by a couple bodies at a time at most, one way or the other. We hit sixty with the peak of the transfers thing and now we're at fifty-five staff, so. Yeah, don't, don't read too much into the staff count numbers, I mean, we're, I guess you can't help yourself, it's curious, it's a reflection of a development cycle. But the development team is very consistent and it's very consistent.